Good evening and welcome to the 2017 School Board Candidate Forum. This is presented by Hastings Community TV as well as the Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm Tom Wright with HCTV and I will be moderating this evening's event and hoping to keep these candidates' answers in moderation. We'll see how good of a job I do here. Thank you for joining us, for those here in the auditorium or as well on Facebook. We are going live on Facebook right now. I do want to caution you, apparently our internet signal here is not the greatest, so the signal might cut in and out, but have no fear, the full program will air, be uploaded on YouTube and will air on Channel 15 starting tomorrow evening. Tonight you will hear from the four candidates running for the three open seats. I will introduce them now and we'll start with left to right here. Ms. Kim Christensen, Mr. Scott Gergen, we have Mr. Dave Pembel over to the right, and then Ms. Kelsey Waits. Also with us is Mr. Peter Blissinbach in the audience, and Mr. Blissinbach is running for reelection to keep his seat for a two-year term. He is running unopposed, so he will be off the hook after his introduction, and so we will hear from Mr. Blissinbach first. But before we invite him up to the stage, I went to quickly note a few things. Again, this will be live on our Facebook page, and just search for Hastings Community TV and look for the 14 logo. It will be on our YouTube as well as 15. And as far as the forum goes, candidates will have six questions, including their introduction and closing remarks. The other questions relate to addressing declining enrollment, fundraising, the curriculum, and a fun surprise question. All questions about the surprise question were given a few days in advance. They will have one or two minutes to give their answers depending on the question. We will rotate the order of the candidates for each question, so they will take turns going first. Again, Hastings will elect three of the four candidates here tonight for four-year terms, and again, Mr. Peter Blissinbach is also on the ballot but running unopposed to keep his seat for the remaining two years on his term. So, at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Blissinbach to the stage, and we have given him three minutes to introduce himself and use up the remaining three minutes however he wishes. Thank you, Mr. Blissinbach.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the time to let the folks know a little bit about me coming into the election as Tom mentioned, I'm running unopposed. This is a two-year term because it's completing a term that was vacated by Vince O'Brien in March. I applied and was elected to serve for the remainder of this year for Vince's term and I'm looking to complete the next two years of his term in the next two years, so...
A little bit about me, I'm the father of seven. I've had kids go through the different Hastings schools over the last 20 years. I've had a lot of exposure to the teachers, the staffs, the principal, to the superintendent, and I know firsthand that we have a quality school system, a quality school district. It's important to me to maintain that quality school district and to be a part of that and to be part of the decision-making that preserves that in the coming years. As a member of the community, I've been involved in many different youth programs. I was involved as a leader in Boy Scouts for 12 years, coaching soccer, coaching baseball. Prior to Hastings, I was also a high school football coach, a driver's ed teacher, and also a youth leader at a YMCA. So, a wide experience with children of lots of different types and different talents. I think I bring that sort of experience into the board, knowing that we need a wide variety of programs to meet the needs of those kids. Let them find their talents, let them find their strengths. As a program manager at Thompson Reuters, every day I'm challenged with decisions that we need to make around tight budgets and around the products and services that we need to offer to our customers. We do that every day. It's something that we do in the school district every week when we have those sorts of discussions across the school board. We need to make sure that we're making the right priorities, making the right decisions for our students, and doing those within the constraints of the budgets that we have. So, I think I can bring that to the school board as well. As part of the school board and as part of the facilities committee, I was part of the group that prepared the bond and prepared the proposal for the levy this coming fall. It's very important that we take these forward in the coming years. We have different facility needs that we need to take care of, and we were able to do that with a zero tax impact for our customers and for our people in the community. Finally, we have many challenges ahead. We have many things that we need to accomplish in the coming years, and I'd like to be part of that. So, thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Peter Blissinbach, again, running unopposed to remain in his seat for the two years left on the term. You are officially off the hook, congratulations. Next, we will hear from Kim Christensen, one of the four candidates vying for the three open seats, the four-year terms. And again, we continue with introductions. Please introduce yourself and share your background. Be sure to include any relevant experiences and skills you would bring to the school board. Then, please tell us why you decided to run for school board.
First of all, I want to thank the Hastings Community TV and Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce for inviting us and for hosting this event. So, here's just a little bit about myself. I graduated from Farmington High School in 1988. I graduated from the College of St. Catherine in 1992 with a degree in speech communications. I've been married for 25 years to my husband Brian. He's employed with Flint Hills Resources as an environmental lab analyst. I was working for Farmington Public Schools when we moved to Hastings in 1996. I was employed with Farmington for three years. In 1998, we were blessed with twin boys. I was a stay-at-home mom for seven years. My boys went to Hastings Public Schools from kindergarten through graduation. They were 2017 graduates of Hastings High and now in their first year of college. In 2005, I was hired by Hastings Schools as a special education PSA. I have been with the Hastings District for 12 years. As of February of 2017, I went to a sub-only status to help my mom and dad as they both developed some health issues. I have been part of the Hastings Community and a taxpayer of the district for 21 years. I obtained my short-term sub-licence where I could teacher-sub in the mainstream classes or special ed settings when needed to do so. I decided to run for school board because I want to remain active with our schools and be a voice for our kids, parents, school staff, and our community. And now I have the time and the energy to devote to this position at this time in my life. I will use my voice and help pave the road towards success with honesty and integrity. I am realistic. I understand the perspective of an employee of the district, a parent of the district, and a taxpayer of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Mr. Scott Gergen, the one incumbent candidate running for one of the three open seats. Again, Mr. Gergen, please introduce yourself and share your background. Be sure to include any relevant experiences and skills you would bring to the school board. Then, please tell us why you decided to run for reelection on the school board.
All right. Thank you, Tom. My name is Scott Gergen. I was born here in the city of Hastings. I am the 10th of 10 children in our family. My entire family are Hastings High School graduates. My parents were children of the Depression, and my father's father passed away when he was 13-years-old, so he was kept at home with only an eighth-grade official education. So, my parents really stressed the importance of education to their family, and my older siblings led by example. I'm married for 25-plus years now. My wife's name is Ann. I have three sons. My oldest son Cal is in his second year of college. He's a graduate from here at Hastings. My second son, Jackson, is a high school senior here in Hastings. And then my youngest, Oliver, is a fifth grader here in Hastings Middle School. Myself, after high school, I attended the University of Minnesota Institute of Technology and also the University of Wisconsin. At these establishments, I completed my bachelor's degree in computer science and business. After completing college and becoming gainfully employed, I continued my education at the University of St. Thomas where I received my master's degree in software engineering. More recently, I completed my mini-MBA program through the University of St. Thomas as well. I have over 25 years of experience in the private sector, in the legal sector, pharmaceuticals, healthcare, and technology. Currently, I work for Thompson Reuters as a technology manager. In this role, I manage global teams and I manage multimillion-dollar software and infrastructure projects. As far as running for reelection, currently I am the vice-chair of the school board, and I'm also very active on numerous committees. I'm currently completing my fourth year. I'm very passionate about our community and our schools, and to be honest, it's the reason that my family is here. When my oldest son was going to be starting kindergarten, we decided to move back to Hastings specifically for the school system and the community. I enjoy giving of my time and talent in a very tangible way to help guide our district and continue to provide a great education experience to upcoming generations.
Thank you. Up next, we will hear from Mr. Dave Pembel on his introduction, and please share your background and be sure to include any relevant experiences and skills you would bring to the school board, and then please tell us why you decided to run for school board.
Good evening. I'm Dave Pembel, and I'm running for school board. First, the question is my background. I was born in North Dakota. At an early age, we moved to Hastings. I'm a graduate of Hastings High School in 1969. Married my wife Dolores Brown. We have four daughters. Dawn is a teacher in South Washington County. The second daughter is a teacher in Rushford-Petersen. The third daughter is a management person for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and our fourth daughter is an auditor for the State of Minnesota Department of Revenue. My background goes from there. When I was young, my parents taught me that you needed to give back to the community for which you live in. So, as life progressed for me, I joined the Civil Air Patrol. I spent 10 years in there as an air and ground rescue specialist. I spent 25 years with the Hastings Police Reserve. I have a post-certified part-time law enforcement certificate from the state. I'm retired. I have a journeyman nuclear machinist licence from the state of Minnesota. I currently just retired from Exile Energy after almost 40 years. Now, we get to the point of why did I want to run? I was on the facilities committee this past year and a half, looking at all the facilities here in the community, in the school district, looking at the needs and trying to decide where to go, looking at what needs to be done, what could be done, and how to approach those things. And after retirement, I felt it was important that I needed to do something else and give back to the community for which I live in, give back to the school district. So, in that frame of mind, I felt that it was important that I submit my name at that time and decide to run for school district board candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we hear from Ms. Kelsey Waits. Again, Kelsey, please introduce yourself and share your background. Be sure to include any relevant experiences and skills you would bring to the school board, and then please tell us why you decided to run for school board.
All right. I'm Kelsey Waits, and thank you so much for having me here. Being prior military, we've experienced a number of different communities, but when my husband came to Minnesota for a job interview, I walked around Hastings and I fell in love with this community. So much, in fact, that I asked him to take all of his other job offers and interviews off the table. My love for this community has only grown since that day. I'm currently active on the Friends of the Library Board, and I also serve on the Dakota County Extension Committee. I have an undergraduate degree in psychology from Wellesley College, a master's degree in statistics, and a strong background in applied research. I have two young children, ages four and seven. My youngest is currently in a class at Tilden, and she absolutely loves it. And my oldest has actually been homeschooled ever since she gave herself an ulcer in preschool due to severe anxiety. And my oldest daughter Abby is actually one of my big motivations for my school board run. We're lucky enough that we were able to bring her home when she started to have problems, but that's not realistic for every family. And for those families who struggle in the system due to mental or behavioral disorders, physical disabilities, or even just curriculum difficulty, they need someone who can understand what they're going through and to advocate for them. Being a homeschooler allows me to look at the school district from a different perspective, and our reasons for homeschooling make me a stronger advocate for supportive student environments as mental health problems in children continue to rise. I'm a firm believer in the public school system and its importance to the community, but I'm also a firm believer the typical schooling is not right for every child. I would like to use my experience in research and data analysis to help make the best long-term decisions for our district. I would also like to use my experience as a young transplant to bring a fresh voice to the community and to our government as we continue to struggle with low enrollment and an aging community. I believe that I have a unique voice, and I think that we could use that voice in our community right now. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our next question, and since Mr. Blissinbach started the last one, Kim, you get to start this one. The question is, Hastings is experiencing a downward trend of 20- to 30-year-olds living in the community. What ideas do you have on enticing young couples to stay and raise their children in the Hastings School District?
Most people don't take living or moving to a new area lightly. People look at MCA scores of different districts when making decisions on where to relocate or settle down with their family. They just do. They want to know that the school district they are enrolling their child in has strong schools. People seek out whether or not the town has a reputation for being a welcoming community. After visiting our town, do they leave feeling people are friendly and helpful? They want to know what size classes are. They look at housing. Do we offer a variety of moderate housing options for young couples and parents? Is our district a safe place to send our children to school? Does it put money in to update the security of our schools? They are also looking for a variety of activities for their children. Do we offer a variety of extracurricular activities, or are we a district that puts all our eggs into one basket? We need to look at what our surrounding districts offer or may not offer. I know of two couples with young girls who were looking to relocate their families in either Rosemont, Randolph, Farmington, or Hastings. One of those families chose Farmington, and one chose to relocate in Rosemont because both districts offered cheerleading and dance line. Hastings does not. Farmington also has media specialists at all their elementary schools, and Hastings does not. We need to be current on the wants and needs of potential community members. My husband and I thought we would move back to Farmington once our boys started kindergarten, but we stayed because of the community. We felt safe here and because we were impressed on what we had heard about the Hastings School District. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Mr. Scott Gergen, the incumbent candidate. Hastings is experiencing a downward trend of 20- to 30-year-olds living in the community. What ideas do you have on enticing young couples to stay and raise their children in the Hastings School District?
All right. Thanks, Tom. Obviously, this is not a problem with a quick solution. Our research shows that the growing demographic in Hastings is age 55-plus. Hastings is classified as an exurb, not a suburb. Many people look at Hastings and they think about how far away it is from St. Paul, how far away it is from Minneapolis. They look at the main arteries out of town, Highway 61, which was recently upgraded to four lanes, and then our two-lane Highway 55 heading out of town. Job one for us is to focus on our primary role as a school board, which is providing the best education possible for all of our students within the budget that we are provided. Hastings is known to have an excellent school system. We need to keep that. Why? First, we need to protect our base. We need to provide excellent quality and variety of programming to keep Hastings District students in Hastings. Two, the boomerang effect. The boomerang effect is when someone grows up somewhere, leaves, and comes back home. I am a prime example of the boomerang effect. Ensure that Hastings graduates are happy with their community and the education that they received. When they choose where to live and raise a family, Hastings will be a great option. We should also look for more opportunities to partner with the city of Hastings in making sure that our schools are highlighted in marketing materials aimed at potential residents and businesses. As a community, we need to bring in more business to the Hastings area. We need to make it convenient for a family to live where they are employed. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Mr. Dave Pembel on that question, and again, that question is, Hastings is experiencing a downward trend of 20- to 30-year-olds living in the community. What ideas do you have on enticing young couples to stay and raise their children in the Hastings School District?
Part of what I see in this problem is that as the demographics, aging, family size, we need to address, as Scott said, the issue of providing first, a quality education. Second, we need to be able to promote that quality education, not only locally with the children that live here that grow up to be adults and have their families and then think they're going to move on to a different area, but we need to promote that somewhere in the metro area here so that folks realize, one, Hastings is a beautiful community to move to. There are opportunities here. There are housing available, but we need to work in a partnership with the city, the school district, and the chamber, the county, to try and develop a process that we can promote ourselves as a great opportunity for an education for your children, a great place to live, a fun place to live that gives you opportunities, but yet is not the traditional community that's tied to, "We are a freestanding community, but we are still close to the cities." 20- 25-minute drive will take you to St. Paul and to parts of Minneapolis. It's a place that we want to ensure is solid, but yet we want to invite folks that says that we can make this work. So, there's work to be done, and I think that the process can be completed, but we just need to roll up our sleeves and get started. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, with the final answer to that question will be Kelsey Waits, and again, I'll repeat that question for everybody. Hastings is experiencing a downward trend of 20- to 30-year-olds living in the community. What ideas do you have on enticing young couples to stay and raise their children in the Hastings School District?
This is a question that I've been addressing in my campaign from the start. First, I would like to say that if we want to attract more new, young families to Hastings, we need to have the perspective of those families represented on our local government. And as a young transplant to this community, I think I can offer that much-needed perspective right now. So, millennials are a lot different from previous generations. For starters, more millennials live in urban environments than any other age groups have. They prefer the convenience of public transportation, the close proximity to job sources, they like that cities are authentic and diverse. And I think these are some of the various things that Hastings is struggling with right now. We need to work on better public transportation, both within our city and out of our city. We need to have more activities in-town, a wider variety of downtown shopping, which is coming, and maybe even some new restaurants. Young people want convenience. Working on adding jobs would be fantastic, but Hastings is also an easy commute most places, especially if we can improve our public transportation. The cities, Woodbury, the nuclear plant in Red Wing, these are all commutable, and we need to advertise that fact. Millennials are also getting married later, and they prefer to rent rather than own homes. So, maybe we're looking at this the wrong way. Maybe it's not that we need to focus on attracting young 20-year-old couples, but young 20-year-old individuals. Have them love Hastings as individuals, and they'll stay once they're a couple. Since we know they like to rent, we can work on housing, some apartments that cater to younger people with their amenities. Throughout all of this, we also need to make sure to keep our school district strong because this is one of the huge factors that people look at when choosing a home. This is a community-wide problem, and it requires a community-wide solution. So, I would like to work closely with city council and school board to get these conversations going. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to our next question, and we'll be starting this one. It will be Mr. Scott Gergen, our incumbent candidate. He'll have one minute to answer this question, and it's on fundraising. Hastings is not alone in that many programs and activities are dependent on fundraising. Where do you stand on the amount of fundraising done by our students and others involved in these programs?
Thanks, Tom. Having three sons active in many different sports, clubs, and activities, I fully understand that fundraising can seem a bit overwhelming given our already busy schedules. I view fundraising as an opportunity for families to lower the cost of participation in activities if they choose to do so. We do not have programs with mandatory fundraising. Fundraising may provide a student with an opportunity to participate in a given sport or activity that they otherwise may not be able to afford. Families that choose not to participate in fundraising can pay the set fees. We need to coordinate between our various clubs and groups to make sure that the fundraising campaigns are varied. In other words, I don't need four different sets of cards from four different teams. We also need to thank our local businesses for their very generous and sustained support by shopping local. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Mr. Dave Pembel. Again, I'll repeat the question. Fundraising. Hastings is not alone in that many programs and activities are dependent on fundraising. Where do you stand on the amount of fundraising done by our students and others involved in these programs?
Fundraising, to me, is an option for families to help drive down costs for the sports or for the arts programs that they belong or they want to participate in. If they're not willing to do the fundraising, there is a set fee schedule for those things. But as our four daughters went to Hastings and they all took trips, they all were in football band and other activities, and we were out fundraising many, many nights, many, many days. But it was an option that our family chose to take, and it helped build a family bond because we all participated, not only my wife and our daughters, but it worked out well, and I think fundraising is a good option to have. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Kelsey Waits. Kelsey, fundraising. Hastings is not alone in that many programs and activities are dependent on fundraising. Where do you stand on the amount of fundraising done by our students and others involved in these programs?
Well, fundraising is very important to help keep costs down. As I've been talking to community members, though, I'm hearing a lot of people mention donor fatigue, that they're just being asked with the levy and with all of the groups to try to fundraise all of these things, and that's something we need to work on. Now, in researching professional fundraising groups, donor fatigue doesn't appear to be a real thing. It's not the frequency of asking for money that's actually weighing on people, but it's the lack of connection that the community is feeling to our programs. So, I think that it would be important in going door-to-door, in hearing more passion from students, and being able to feel better connected to what we're giving money to. I know that when people come to my door, I give money. I get a short thank you, but that's about it. There's nothing about the transaction that makes me particularly excited or inspired. So, I think we need to work better on making that personal connection, and then we can continue to support the amount of fundraising that we are doing.
Thank you. And with the final answer to that question will be Ms. Kim Christensen. Kim, Hastings is not alone in that many programs and activities are dependent on fundraising. Where do you stand on the amount of fundraising done by our students and others involved in these programs?
Ah, fundraising. To be honest, when our boys would come home with pamphlets regarding fundraising, my husband and I would look at each other and just sigh, "Oh, no." But it is needed as funding is decreasing and costs are in- But it is needed, as funding is decreasing and costs are increasing. I don't think there's a way around it. But we do need to be sensitive to people's time. It's a huge time hog, especially for those families with multiple children needing to, to fundraise. I would like to see more options. Give people the choice of either a fundraiser, buyout, or the option to sell products or services. Some people would just rather donate than purchase items. Examples would be a 5K, which some of our area schools have already done. I love that idea. Swimming a certain amount of laps and raising money, our local swim club offered that. These support physical fitness, support for one another, and bringing families and community together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and starting our next question, number one will be Mr. Dave Pembel. And then here's a question. In your opinion, how prepared are Hastings students, or Hastings graduates, for the real world? What, if anything, do you feel should be considered for our curriculum to better prepare them?
I think that the curriculum that is used here in Hastings is a outstanding, uh, teaching tool. I think that, uh, we do prepare our students here for a good life experience, either they're going on to college or to a technical vocational program. But I think that there still is the opportunity to, um, look at a two-track system more in depth, to try and ensure that we find all the individuals' needs and desires to, if you're going in a college program, or if you're going into a vocational program, technical program, that we strive towards that and try and build a sound process to send those children off into the big world and make them successful. In my experience, where I worked for Xcel Energy, we saw a lot of foreign individuals coming in, getting great jobs, because their education process is a lot more in-depth, takes more time, provides those individuals a stronger start at life than what I see is happening in some communities around the area. So I think Hastings needs to, has a good process, but we need to make sure that that process continues and we work hard to, uh, ensure that those students move on to a great life experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Kelsey Waits, and I'll repeat the question here. In your opinion, how prepared are Hastings graduates for the real world? What, if anything, do you feel should be considered for our curriculum to better prepare them?
Hastings does a great job giving our students the tools they need to excel in college. Sixty percent of our graduates go to a four-year college, many of them already have college credits that they've amassed. Forty percent of our graduates don't go to four-year colleges. Our Scott, high school currently has eight different classes that can earn a student credit at a technical college, but many of these are pretty varied and wouldn't all be able to use towards the same certification. I think that giving these students more options to earn technical college credits or even certification would be a great way to help prepare them for their real-world path. And now I'm calling college a real-world path because for most students, I don't believe that college is truly the real world. It's more of a transition. Preparing students for real life is more than preparing them to do well in college. Being part of the real world means that you're responsible for your day-to-day activities, more or less self-sufficient, you know how to pay your own bills, do your own shopping, cook for yourself. It also means you have the skills to interact with people, employers or coworkers, for example. So Hastings definitely has measures in place to prepare students for life beyond college if students choose to take them. The wealth of extracurricular programs and groups offered at the high school gives students a great chance to learn leadership and interaction with others outside of a classroom setting. This is a great way to teach those life skills, and I'm happy to see so many opportunities offered and supported at the high school. Our high school also has an amazing array of courses, including some great real-life classes, such as the On the Job Training Course, the Personal Finance Course, and the Life Skills Course. These work on job experience, budgeting, food preparation, just to name a few of the topics that they discuss. These are important classes to really learn those real-life skills, and we should continue to promote and recommend them for all students.
Thank you. Up next, Ms. Crimp, Kim Christensen. I'll repeat the question. In your opinion, how prepared are Hastings graduates for the real world? What, if anything, do you feel should be considered for our curriculum to better prepare them?
There are a few things I think of when answering this question. The first one is, I would like to see a requirement for a basic life skills class. My boys took a class in high school called Money Smart. It's one semester. They learned about credit cards, debt, balancing checkbooks, and 401K. They both came out of that class looking at how to be more responsible with money. It's helping in college now, when they don't have mom and dad with them all the time to make money decisions. Um, I think it was the most real-world class they had ever took, and they loved it. And they had a fantastic teacher. I would love to see this as a requirement. I would like to see more support for kids leaning toward trade school options. Have employees and employers coming into the schools to talk about what schooling skills are required for a career in construction, linemen, electricians, and plumbing. But I would also like to see the same of careers that require a four-year degree or longer, and what it entails, having businesses, physicians, nurses, engineers come and speak to students. At Kennedy High School in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, the woodworking class takes two days a week to work on a real construction site. Kids could get a little taste of what that kind of career entails and what type of skills and schooling is needed for that. I so admire our guidance counselors. They have such a hard job, and in my opinion, are overworked. They are trying to help kids make the next step after graduation, while at the same time helping kids with emotional and social issues. Our family needed more college guidance than we felt our high school could give. With two going through this at the same time, we needed to know how we were going to pay for this and for the boys to make the right decisions on what school and classes were the best fit for them. We had college career planner help the boys with these decisions. There is just too much to know. Thank you.
Thank you. And giving the final answer to this question will be incumbent candidate, Mr. Scott Gergen. Mr. Gergen, in your opinion, how prepared are Hastings graduates for the real world? What, if anything, do you feel should be considered for our curriculum to better prepare them?
Thanks, Tom. I believe our curriculum here at Hastings is diverse, rigorous, and challenging at all levels. We offer a wide variety of programming that allows our students to still be able to explore their interests outside of their core classes. In addition to our core curriculum, we offer high-quality programs to prepare our students to enter a technical school, trade school, military, or the workforce. We work with the local technical schools to ensure that our classes are preparing our students to take that next step in their education. In fact, some of our technical schools give scholarships specifically to Hastings High School students for completing specific coursework here at Hastings. Additionally, we offer an excellent assortment of advanced placement and college-in-the-schools classes, where Hastings students have the opportunity to earn college credit as they also complete their high school requirements. We do also have a number of students taking advantage of the post-secondary education opportunity, where they are actually attending college while earning high school credit as well. One of my favorite questions to ask our young adults, as I see them in our community after graduation, is about how prepared they felt taking that next step. Almost always, I hear about some growing pains, as perhaps they wrestle with their newfound independence. I also hear how well-prepared they felt as a Hastings graduate. I'm not sure I can pinpoint a curriculum improvement, but I would recommend that we, as parents, do our best to introduce some of our personal, real-world economics to our students as they enter their post-high school life. For instance, help them to understand the costs associated with running a household, such as mortgages, car payments, insurance, and utilities. Help them understand student loans and costs after college, and budgeting, saving, and investing for the future.
Thank you. All right, and that brings us to our surprise question, which I am about to reveal to myself. Actually, I do know this one. Let's see here. Up to this point, only two of us are aware. Okay. And the lucky one to, to get the first one to answer this is Kelsey Waits, and I'm very happy to say the tape did not ruin the question here, so I was, I'm still able to read it.
I was a little hopeful.
Yeah, sorry. The complaint, too much homework, has been voiced by multiple parents in public forums in the past. What is your opinion on the homework load in Hastings, and what, if any, changes do you believe should be made?
I think this is a good question. Uh, homework is one of those things that a lot of students struggle with. I know that, um, the daughter I have at home, homework would be brutal to her, and I have met with other parents who have had students in the special education program, and even when their students have very particular issues with homework, there is no individual education plan that allows there to be a homework-free option, even for students who really struggle with anxiety over homework, um, or the fact that homework is not something they can focus on, even though they could get every question right on the test. And homework, to me, doesn't do a lot. Um, research shows that homework, too much homework, actually can cause students to lose their love of learning. So keeping homework loads down is important, and I think also working with families that homework is causing a problem, to work with them on being able to get out of homework, I think, would be important.
Thank you. And I apologize, I did not say how much time you guys had, but you did, did very well there for one minute. We're going to keep it to one minute for this. Um, Kim, you're up next, please. Uh, Kim Christensen on our surprise question on homework. The complaint, too much homework, has been voiced by multiple parents in public forums in the past. What is your opinion on the homework load in Hastings, and what, if any, changes do you believe should be made?
I think homework, uh, and the load of homework really needs to depend on the age of the child. Um, let's take kindergarten. Um, you know, I, I don't think it should be more than a ten-minute assignment. Um, kids that age need to get outside, they need to play, they need to, um, use their imagination and have creative play. Um, as we get older, um, I have seen homework, how it does really, um, back up what the teacher is going to be teaching the next day. So sometimes at home, too, it, it kind of clicks when mom and dad or your guardian is helping, but, um, uh, yeah, I think it really depends on the age, and we need to be very, um, sensitive to that. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from incumbent candidate, Mr. Scott Gergen. On the homework load, the complaint, too much homework, has been voiced by multiple parents in public forums in the past. What is your opinion on the homework load in Hastings, and what, if any, changes do you believe should be made?
All right, thank you, Tom. So the homework load that I've seen, as my kids have gone through the, the full spectrum of classes here, I think has been mostly appropriate. Uh, I, I would suggest that if a, as a parent, if you have a question or a concern about a specific, uh, class that your child is in, where there seems to be a inordinate amount of homework, I would absolutely, uh, reach out to that, that specific teacher, just ask that question about what the expectation is. Sometimes there's reasons, uh, for too much homework coming home. Either the work is not getting done in class, or perhaps the child, uh, maybe needs a little more help, uh, understanding a given topic. As we go through, I saw both of my older sons, as they went through the AP and college-in-the-schools classes, and the homework load there can be absolutely staggering on some nights. But going through college myself, and now seeing my son, uh, in his second year of college, that kind of mirrors what they're going to have at the next level as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Dave Pembel on our surprise question on homework. The complaint, too much homework, has been voiced by multiple parents in public forums in the past. What is your opinion on the homework load in Hastings, and what, if any, changes do you believe should be made? And you have one minute.
Thank you. As a father of four daughters who all were in school very close together in age, you'd have classes, and they're looking at, I know my wife and I looked at the amount of homework that came home, and in some instances, we felt that was a lot, some instances, we thought that maybe there needs to be a little bit more help, so that the teacher sent home a little extra homework to bring our child up to speed. But in general, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, homework is a good thing, because no matter if you go on to the college track or to the vocational track, homework will obviously go upward and not come down. I, again, I guess I look at it and say, if you think that you're getting too much homework, I would definitely go in and talk to the teacher and try and find out where we're at with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we are ready for our final pitch. Uh, allow each candidate here to give their final pitch and why Hastings should vote for them, and provide any contact information if they wish. Um, and first to go, we'll, we'll go back to Ms. Kim Christensen, being the first to go. Please give us your final pitch in two minutes on why Hastings should vote for you.
I'm not a seasoned politician. I was raised that boasting and talking about myself was rude and to always remain humble. So this journey for me, running for school board, has really pulled me out of my comfort zone. When running, you have to tell people why they need to vote for you, what you're good at, give them your opinions, even though you know that some will roll their eyes and you will ruffle some feathers. But when I believe in something, I will stand up for what I think is right and voice my concerns. I will listen and always be honest, because I know when people make untrue promises, words stop meaning anything. When making decisions, I will put into account the entire picture and be open-minded on what decisions will be best for our children, staff, parents, and our community. A big obstacle we face is funding, needing to keep a budget. When I decided to run for school board, I set my budget for camp, for campaigning at $200. That's not much in today's world of campaigning, but that was the budget I had to work with. I also understand our tax dollars need to be spent wisely. I have worked in public schools for fifteen years. I've worked in the classrooms, the buses, the cafeterias, the halls, and the playgrounds. I'm a parent of two Hastings graduates who attended our schools from kindergarten through graduation. I've seen the good experiences of my children's education journey, and I've seen some things that I feel need to be refined. I believe in public education, and I know how important good schools are to create a strong community. I feel that all of us, running for school board, we are all running for the right reasons, because we care about our schools and community. We have a choice to make on November seventh, on who will sit on the school board. I would so appreciate your vote, but I truly feel there is no bad choice here. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to share our thoughts and opinions with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now hear from incumbent candidate, Mr. Scott Gergen. Please give us your final pitch in two minutes on why Hastings should reelect you.
As I complete my first term on our school board, I realize just how much I have learned about the intricacies of school budgeting, operations, and both short and long-term planning in the educational system. This is experience that, as an incumbent, I can continue to provide our board and our district as we shape our educational future. I'm respectful, I'm respectful of the fact that our schools operate with revenue from our state and local taxpayers. I always do my best to be a good steward of our resources. In both my professional and personal life, I'm known as a reasonable, logical person with a penchant for problem-solving. My professional career has included many opportunities for leadership, creativity, and fiscal management. I manage global partnerships and resourcing, which has allowed me to learn more about other cultures and be sensitive to their needs. I'm experienced in evaluating options, building consensus, and making difficult decisions. I'm the person that you call when you need help with something. I've been very involved volunteering for school events in the classroom, as well as being an being an active participant in community sports groups. I'm enthusiastic, and I bring a positive spirit to the activities in which I'm involved. I'm approachable, and I like to listen fully to understand issues and concerns that are presented to me. I approach issues with an open mind, I ask thoughtful questions, and look for options for resolution, always with our students' well-being at the forefront. I've enjoyed my engagement on our school board thus far, and I would very much like to continue. I would ask for your vote on November 7th to allow me to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Mr. Dave Pembel. Please give us your final pitch in two minutes on why Hastings should vote for you.
I look at this as a challenge. When I was a young child, my parents said to me, "You have to give back. You are a child who is a person that works for a reason, be it a work project or be it a volunteer activity." Through my four decades of being involved in Hastings' community activities, school district activities, I've given 100% of my effort to converse, listen, but best of all, communicate with folks at all levels, and come to agreements and build, through those agreements, a process that can work. I come from the nuclear industry, where we have very little opportunity or very little issue for error. It has to be right the first time. And through that process, we learned that in order to be right the first time, you develop a good communication process. You listen to folks, you understand their needs. You may disagree, but you work through those things to secure a common good. That is my option here. When I looked through this process this summer after being on the facilities committee, and I thought about, should I run, should I not run? And it came down to the last day before filings closed, and I realized that there was only one other person who had officially signed up and said they were going to run. I said at that point, "Dave Pembel, you need to stand up and say you're going to run." So I would look for your support on November 7th as a person that can communicate, work through problems, and find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Ms. Kelsey Waits. Please give us your final pitch in two minutes on why Hastings should vote for you.
I believe that governments are stronger when they offer diverse opinions from people with varied backgrounds and experiences. This promotes healthy discussion, creative thinking, and better representation when we're making decisions for an entire community. With my background in psychology and statistics, I could offer the school board a different perspective when we're looking at the long-term effects of the decisions that we're making. As a mother to a child with learning needs, I would be able to connect with families who are struggling, and I would be a strong advocate for those students. As a military spouse, I had the opportunity to live in many wonderful communities and see what they've been doing to attract or not attract young families. I can bring that experience to the school board. As a young woman, I can offer a much-needed perspective on how to attract more young people like me to Hastings, young people who will fall in love with the city in the same way that I have, young people who will see the value of this community and want to raise their children here. I know that I'm young and that I'm newer to Hastings, but I think those qualities are exactly why I should be on this school board. I can be the voice for other young families in town who are getting ready to raise the next generation of students here. Not only do I represent the demographic that Hastings is trying to attract, but I'm intelligent, passionate about children and education, and committed to this community. And isn't that exactly who you would want serving in your local government? Two minutes is not nearly enough time for me to answer some of these questions and to discuss the many different ideas that I have. So if you do have concerns about the district, please reach out and contact me. If you want more details on any of my answers, especially the homework one that I had five seconds to prepare for, please call, and I would be more than happy to sit down and talk. My number, feel free to call me, is 651-703-2055, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum. Thank you to all of our candidates. Again, we have Kim Christensen, incumbent Scott Gergen, Mr. Dave Pembel, and Ms. Kelsey Waits. How about a round of applause for our candidates? It's a big ask to ask you all to come up here and do this, and I really appreciate your time and effort. I'm sure many voters and residents that are watching are really appreciative of your time as well. I'd like to also thank the Hastings Chamber for their help on this, the community ed in the middle school for hosting us here, to the HCTV crew, and I'd like to thank everybody watching and attending here tonight. Again, this will be on our YouTube channel, and will replay on Channel 15 for the next two weeks. For information on the bond levy referendum, you may have noticed, we didn't talk about that tonight, but we intentionally did that because there's a lot of information on that on the website, and Superintendent Tim Collins has made a number of videos presenting that, and those are available on our YouTube channel as well, and you can also find those on the school's website. And that's at hastings.k12.mn.us, or you can do what I do and just Google ISD 200. Either way, you'll find it. Thank you, everyone, again. We hope this helps with your decision. Now, please get out and make that decision and vote November 7th. Have a good night.